Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. So have a motion.
Move to excuse Councilmember Garcia?
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Garcia. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. If you will all stand and join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we can all just take a moment to reflect on everything that's going on in the world today and hope for a better day down the road. Thank you. All right, we have an agenda before us. Are there any additions or deletions?
Will we approve the agenda, Your Honor?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is approval of the minutes. We'll start with the September 13th regular meeting minutes. Any input?
Move to approve the September 13th regular meeting minutes?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the September 13 minutes as submitted. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, we have a pre-scheduled speaker, former mayor Brian Jarvis. Come on up.
Mayor Stone, thank you so much, Vice Mayor.
Good to see you.
Council. My name is Brian Jarvis, 825 Timberwood Drive, Beaver Creek. I'm a member and represent the Beaver Creek Fair Funding Committee. I've got Walter Denise Chin here tonight for moral support, so I thank them for being here. I think what we have to say this evening dovetails well into Mr. Fallon's report. It helps give us some context to what he was saying, so that I can move through this. We're looking at what he was talking about with income tax, recommending an alternative revenue source for the city of Beaver Creek. Beaver Creek is solely reliant upon property taxes right now as the main funding source, and we see that as a current and long-term issue with this. Beaver Creek is the 21st largest city in the state of Ohio, but one of only three remaining in Ohio out of 248 cities without a significant revenue source other than property taxes. It's the largest of the three. Cortland is up 20 miles north of Youngstown, up in Turnbull County. We've got Bellbrook just down the road from us. Beaver Creek, over 46,000 population, 26. I'm told that's 27 point something square miles now, but I'll have to take care of the slide. 27.7. I will take care of that. But, and let me give you each a copy of this presentation. If you could... Unlike the other three cities there, Beaver Creek's size, infrastructure, operating needs, and growing population require additional revenue. If you're going to have value-added and quality services, now, if the only consideration is cost, then you're going to lose value and you're going to lose quality. And Beaver Creek has always been about value and quality. And as more people understand with property taxes being the sole revenue source, our community is impacted with these ever-increasing property taxes. And we saw that from this recent revaluation. The first thing people said, "My property taxes are going up." But they only want property taxes from Mr. Fallon's presentation, and that disconnect is a problem. Overall revenue for all city services is much less than it could be. Mr. Fallon mentioned about non-residents who work here, who are paying here for the first time like almost every other city in the state does. And unfortunately, in the current system with only property taxes, the city is competing with the county, township, school district, JVS, health district, and park district for that single revenue source. And to be quite honest, the school district is being squeezed out. And that's a big problem for Beaver Creek's future. This will continue unabated and will grow even larger over time with every revaluation. The residents have to understand this is going to get worse and worse and worse. It is not going to get better without doing what every other city, almost every other city in the state has done with income taxes. This past November, the income tax was on the ballot, and it was at the closest margin in the four attempts since the cities incorporation. 1984, a 56, 58-point difference. 1994, 2013, 2020, a four-point difference. I mean, people not only understand they're getting hammered with these huge property taxes. And again, it just makes sense. When you only have one revenue source, this will happen. They're going to understand that in order to have the community be better and more affordable, you can't rely on simply one revenue source. I compare this to your portfolio. You can't have just stocks, or just bonds, or just commodities, or just this. You have to have a diversified portfolio to survive all markets. Income for a city is exactly the same way. There is no difference. Now, the city itself can take some steps that residents recommended last November. Residents said, "Hey, I like the idea, but I want more property tax reductions than just a small amount you proposed the last time." The city should look into that. Police officers. Beaver Creek needs to stay safe. We have way fewer police officers than the national standard, than the CIA standard recommends than anything, and we need to have a safe city. Infrastructure, our streets and roads and bridges, they keep being repaired because they need to be done right the first time. Park services, so many people say they don't come to our parks because there's no restrooms there. The infrastructure is lacking there as well. So much needs to be done, but the revenue to do it is not there. So our recommendation is that sometime soon, there should be another effort to provide voters opportunity to slow down the growth of taxes. People say, "I don't want to pay taxes." Look, you want police, you want streets, you want parks, you want this. That means you want to pay for it. People want what government has to offer, they just don't want to pay for it sometimes, and this is key here. This will benefit the community and better fund public services. The city needs to maintain budget transparency. You've got a great process. You have quarterly reports on the spending. You've got your checkbook online, so anybody can see how it's being spent. Keep doing that. Need to more clearly specify how the revenue will be distributed. Police, streets, bridges, parks, wherever it's going to go, be very, very specific. And again, this is about value-added services. If the only thought by the public is about cost, then Beaver Creek is going to spiral down as other cities have. You have to look at, this is a price for added value and for exceptional services. A few facts that we've collected. Property tax collection in Beaver Creek is greater than the combination collected from Dayton and Kettering. It's incredible how much property taxes are here. While they collect income tax revenue from our residents who work there to keep their taxes lower. A second look at it, property tax collections in Beaver Creek are greater than the cities of Fairborn, Trotwood, Bellbrook, Huber Heights, and Miami'sburg combined, while all of those except for Bellbrook collects income taxes from our residents who work there to keep their taxes lower. This doesn't make sense. And I always use Centerville as a comparison. Centerville is half our size. Centerville doesn't have any voted levies, none whatsoever. They run on 2.35 inside millage. They do have a 2.5% income tax, but with their population being half ours and their workforce there half ours, we could do that here with a 1% income tax. Our property tax rate for the city of Beaver Creek is 5.68 times Centerville's cities. That's huge, and our residents have to realize they are not doing themselves a favor by not supporting the income taxes. This is, the data are all out there. Conclusion, a long-term goal of this income tax recommendation, number one, reduce property taxes and alleviate the need for future property tax increases. That's number one. Number two, as Mr. Fallon mentioned, income sources by state law that aren't earned income are exempt. Retirement pay, military pay, unearned income, can't tax that. Tax credit for residents who work elsewhere being taxed, 100% tax credit for whatever a resident pays elsewhere. And again, keep all other residents and non-residents locally generated revenue in Beaver Creek. Non-working residents working in the city would pay here for the first time their fair share. This is all about providing exceptional operational infrastructure services to a community at a more fair and lower cost than property taxes alone can provide. This slide, thank you, Ms. Landrum, I just added this. It's not in your package. Whenever the state comes in to audit you, and they did this year, they do an assessment, and there's two areas that Beaver Creek does not do very well in. Number one, our property tax revenue is dropping. And so unfortunate, this is a, you can't read it, but in that second paragraph to the right, what the state says is that "This indicates a decline in property tax revenue and is an indication that your community may be facing financial hardship due to declines in significant revenue sources. It also will reflect the need for additional sources of revenue to maintain stability." The state of Ohio has given you guys a shot across the bow, saying you need, and the city needs, the residents need to know, you need an alternative revenue source. This is from the state. This is not from us. And this is public record. It's out on the state's website. The next chart. This, is this for me to do here? Yes. Indicator number 10, and this is critical. We're in the red. The city is in the red on this. What this indicates, what this indicator reflects is an over-reliance on government revenue. The city does not receive enough local revenue to perform all the work it needs to do. The city is highly reliant upon what they call grants, entitlements, shared revenue, and therefore is vulnerable to decreases in these revenue sources. And again, this is important that people realize that the state is telling the city, you're in the red on this. You need a revenue source besides property taxes, because if that drops off, you're going to be in trouble meeting your revenue needs. So again, the state says this. Our group recommends an alternative revenue source besides just property taxes. 240, whatever the number was, all but three cities in Ohio. Villages, some do, some don't. It depends. It's hard to get an accurate count there. But with cities, the 21st largest city in the state with the needs that you have here, there's no question that, as Mr. Fallon said, you can't have sales taxes. That's not permitted. There's so much that you can't do by state law, and income tax is the only other revenue source that makes sense. And if there's any questions, we'll be free to address those.
Discussion? Did you receive the packet from the consultant, Brian? Do you have that?
I did.
Have you incorporated that into your comments yet, or are you going to try to bring that?
No, it was something that this, I thought dovetailed well into that, because he was showing how the residents' responses changed once they were more informed. But, you know, some of the things, we stayed with this presentation to stay at a very high level. As people know, I'm prone to get into the weeds once in a while with too much details, and so I promised everybody on this first presentation I was going to stay at a God's eye view. And so the next time you see me, I'll have some more details. But for this, this is just looking what the city needs to provide quality and value services. And as I said earlier, this is also impacting our school district. In decades ago, the cities were funded well by the state. In 1980, when the city was incorporated, 55% of our school funding was from the state. Today, it's down to 21%, and so schools need higher property taxes to subsidize them, and that conflicts with the city's need for higher property taxes. The city of Centerville, I mentioned, does it real well. The city of Centerville runs on inside millage and income taxes, and leaves all of the property tax levies for the schools to use, which is why Centerville School District has left ours in the dust in these past 10, 15 years, because their funding supports schools.
That's an interesting point, Brian, and can you explain how they end up with 2.3 mills of inside millage?
Yes.
Because I don't think we, ours is not that high.
No, it's not. Whenever you have a taxing jurisdiction, county, city, township, school district, there are 10 mills of inside millage that the Constitution lets those entities spread between them. In Montgomery County's case with Centerville, there's 2.35 inside mills they get to use. And again, that's constitutional part of the 10 mills. For Beaver Creek, we have, I believe, it's 1.4, 1.5 mills total that's inside millage. And so, again, that is multiplied times your property tax valuation, times 0.35 to get your taxes. This inside millage is something that every community has. There's no exceptions to it. Ours is lower, but our millage that we actually have, the voted millage, totals almost 14 mills, whereas Centerville's is only 2.35. And that's like five and a half times more than theirs, and so I understand that some residents don't believe that you'll actually lower the property taxes with an income tax. That is the number-one purpose of this. You have an income tax. You don't need as high property taxes. Those will be lowered. Just, you'll see them fall off the books one at a time as that tax revenue keeps coming in. I mean, that is the number-one purpose, and residents need to understand that in some sort of discussion group, that the intent is not to have both high property taxes and a 1% income tax.
Anyone else?
Brian, how do we get the word out? Based on that survey, when they told them what the income tax would do, a lot of people changed their mind and said they would vote for it.
Yeah.
And I think that seems to be the big thing, is an education part of it here. I know the last time with COVID and everything, we couldn't do that, but we need to find a way to make people aware of that, so they're at least making a decision based on facts.
Yeah. Somehow, when you put it into legislative, not just discussions, but when you put it into the ordinance, it's got to be emphasized. This shall happen. It does have to be there. I don't know how you explain to someone, as his data pointed out, we have some people that would sell their birthright and have no income tax. You'll never convince them. It's not going to happen. I don't understand that logic. Why someone would do something to harm themselves, I don't understand that. I'm not that way. So I don't know how to answer that type of question. But for the ones who are open to learning and understanding and how things work and see how we're doing, not so well, really. I mean, we put a nice veneer on our streets and things, but underneath they're crumbling. As a matter of fact, people need to understand that in the long run, they're going to be paying more with higher and higher and higher property taxes. And just have to be able to show it and explain. Show how it's been. Show how it's been increasing. Show things that can't be done. I mean, we tried last time to show every single year, there's a wish list of things that need doing, and there's the revenue coming in, and there is a 7 to 10-mill gap, or 7 to 10, I figured it was mills or million-dollar gap, million-dollar gap between what you can do and what you want to do. And things just keep rolling over and not being done. Areas that flood every spring. My heart breaks when I see people's properties flood. But if some folks' property is not flooding, they don't care what happens downstream, you know? Somehow, you have to get them to know this is a community affair here. We need to come out of this all together and well, and somehow get that across. So again, we're there to give voice from the public of something that we think is needed for our community to go further in the future, and if we can help, we can.
Good example of the aging infrastructure, you may have seen it already, is the traffic signal pole that fell over. I mean, this pole just rusted out and fell over, and there's going to be, as we get older and older and older, these things that we put in place have to be maintained. And so this is just something that kind of, all of a sudden, came out of nowhere, because you can't think of everything all the time. But that's just a good example of the infrastructure costs that have to be maintained somewhere, and sooner the better.
The sooner the better, and I couldn't tell you how many times the North Fairfield Road between Turnbull and the mall has been redone, because the asphalt just ripples, because the underlying material needs replacing, but there's no money to do that with. It's just an incredible, and throughout the city, you can find areas like that. So again, we hope that you take a recommendation and go forward with this, and sometime in the near future, put this on the ballot for the residents to try once again to do what's right for the community.
All right. Councilman Curran, you have a question?
I just wanted to congratulate you again, Brian, for continued leadership in this effort to try to explain and elaborate on the seriousness of the problem we have with the community. Just wanted to extend a thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Next item is Public Hearing PC 21-4. This public hearing was initiated in September 13th. On September 13th, the applicant made their presentation, staff made their presentation, we had public input, and then at council time, we decided to table this. So I would like to, for us to consider a motion, or will consider a motion, to remove this from the table.
So moved.
Could I ask a question while you're still on the record?
We're on the record. It's being recorded constantly. We are on the record, sir. Please, we're good.
Okay.
I'm going to, I'll make a little statement here in a minute, and it may satisfy you, may not.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to remove from the table PC 21-4. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Extinctions, motion carries. All right, before we get started, I do want to make for the public record, just to restate that these meetings, last week's last meeting and this one, are a public meeting. They are of public record. And so for, to clarify that the applicant's statements and the applicant's documents that they presented, along with staff's statements and staff's documents that they presented, are considered testimony record. And they will be considered that as public record for the rest of this case. Okay, now we open it up to any council discussion. That's where we are in the process. Do we have any discussion from council?
Yes, Mayor.
Please.
On the, in the gully, there's seven to nine-foot drop-off there. My question is whether the ground will be evened out in order to hypothetically build. Otherwise, it will make the sign uneven. I'm just wondering if there'll be a change to the terrain down by Pier 1.
And you're asking staff if the submission allows, shows that?
We haven't received any plans as far as the plan on whether they're going to grade or whether it's going to be offset, one side taller than the other.
Okay.
The only plans that we have show that the sign is 55 feet from top to bottom. We don't have any engineered plans showing exactly how that's going to work.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Yes, Mayor. I believe from a discussion with Mr. Taff that, from what I understand, that it will be built at the current grade. Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
So it'd be effectively seven feet?
It would be built at the current grade, and it would not require regrading. It would simply be, you have the dirt that comes up and the stanchions that hold it would come up and simply to an equal level.
Step up the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. That each stanchion on each side would be at ground level, in the ground, but they would come up and make for a level sign. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a tilted sign. We also have done renderings. I think you may have gotten those of, they're still the same billboard, but with different types of anchorages, if that would have any effect on this council.
All right, thank you very much. More questions? All right.
Counsel has received all the records. You do have everything from Mr. Taff and also from Ms. Pror that had all the PUD documents in it. And with respect to, we also have the whole zoning code and a few other things.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
All right, last chance for discussion. Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Could I make one request? Or?
I'd rather not. I'd rather just not open the door, please. Thank you.
All I'm requesting is that we have some further opportunity to present testimony, that sort of thing.
No, sir, not tonight.
Before the hearing closes, we were going to request that, this is our only chance here. Apparently, it's at this level.
You had time for presentation, and if there had been questions from counsel for the applicant, then you would have had the opportunity to respond to those.
I'd like to put on, if what I would like to do is put on a witness or bring some life to the documents.
We're not going that. We have a procedure that we've always used, and that procedure needs to stay intact. And so at this point, input from the applicant is finished.
Well, I just wanted to make the, I just wanted to make the request on the record, though, so that it's there, that we would have liked to have put on a witness or two.
Sir, that is enough, please.
I'm sorry?
That's enough. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Mayor, I move for the purpose of taking administrative action, denial of PC 21-4, Lamar Signs Electronic Variable Message Sign, on the basis that City Council finds the facts submitted with the application do not satisfy the standards and criteria set forth in the approved site plan and subsequent modifications of Planned Unit Development 88-18. The application proposes to construct a third pylon sign in violation of the development's conditions of approval, allowing two pylon signs in a location not approved for the development, and at a height and size substantially larger than permitted. A further move that this motion be fully recorded in the minutes of this council meeting.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Extinctions, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and counsel, for your consideration.
Thank you. All right. Ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First is ordinance 21-17.
Ordinance 21-17, an ordinance by Beaver Creek City Council repealing the current Chapter 97, Trees, Weeds, and Shrubs of the Codified ordinances of the city of Beaver Creek, and enacting a new Chapter 97 Trees, Weeds, and Shrubs to the codified ordinances of the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you. All right, this is the second reading of this ordinance. Is there any further input from staff? We're all good. Any questions from council? All right, do I have, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 21-17.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 21-17. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes, thank you. All right, next is ordinance 21-18.
Ordinance 21-18, an ordinance determining to proceed with the acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public improvements in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, in cooperation with the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District and declaring an emergency.
All right, thank you. Please.
These are the last two, the second reading. Of course, council has been before we passed resolution. We had the first reading. These are, of course, a PACE project, what we refer to as PACE. This is more or less the financing behind it. That's why we have a second reading, but they're both ordinances. I'll explain both at the same time. They're both as an emergency, meaning the 30 days till effectiveness is being waived by the emergency. So thus, it will be a roll call vote. You know, reason behind that is because it's time-sensitive. Anytime you have financing, it's kind of like utility prices. You've got to immediately do that. So that's the reason why both of these ordinances are as an emergency. We felt it good to have two readings, but this just removes the 30-day effectiveness.
All right. Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 21-18.
Second.
As an emergency?
As, as an emergency.
As an emergency, yeah.
All right, I, do I have a second? Your second? I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 21-18 as an emergency. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Dewar.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams. Vice Mayor Adams, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes. All right, moving on. Now, next is ordinance 21-19.
Ordinance 21-19, an ordinance levying special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, in cooperation with the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District, authorizing and approving an energy project cooperative agreement by and among the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District, Ashford of Beaver Creek LLC, and Pace Equity LLC, providing for the financing of those public improvements, authorizing and approving a special assessment agreement by and between the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, the County Treasurer of Green County, Ohio, Ashford of Beaver Creek LLC, the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District, and Pace Equity LLC regarding those special assessments, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. And this is the companion ordinance to the one we just passed. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 21-19 as an emergency?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 21-19 as an emergency. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Dewar.
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes. Thank you. All right, next is Resolution 21-36.
Resolution 21-36, to authorize the Beaver Creek Police Department's acceptance of the Ohio Traffic Safety Selective Enforcement Program STEP Grant.
Hello, Chief.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm well.
Good evening, members of council. This is our time of year again to do our traffic grants that we have here through the state of Ohio. This particular grant, the first one, is the Selective Traffic Enforcement Grant, and it's primarily focused on distracted driving, occupant restraints, aggressive driving, fare to yield, and et cetera. We're notified of our eligibility to receive this grant through the Ohio Traffic Safety Office, to provide this what they call Funding for High Visibility Enforcement, HVE. It's a universal traffic safety approach designed to create deterrence and change unlawful traffic behaviors. Combines highly visible and proactive law enforcement targeting a specific traffic safety issue, as I've mentioned. These STEP hours must be used to conduct this HVE activities in the areas that I listed that primarily deal with fatal crashes and so forth. STEP Grant eligibility is for a maximum of $33,049.85 of reimbursement to the city for officer overtime and fringe benefits. Included in this amount is transportation fuel costs reimbursable up to 5% of the total labor costs. There is no local match required for this grant, and this grant period runs from October 1st of '21 through September 30th of '22, and staff recommends approval and acceptance of this grant.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Move to approve 21-36, Your Honor?
Second. I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-36. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is Resolution 21-37.
Resolution 21-37, to authorize the Beaver Creek Police Department's acceptance of the Ohio Traffic Safety Impaired Driving Enforcement Program IDEP Grant.
Chief, I'd say you're up again.
Yes. This is the companion grant that goes along with STEP. This is IDEP, the Impaired Driving Enforcement Program Grant. Again, we were notified of our eligibility to receive this grant through the Ohio Traffic Safety Office, and this HVE, or High Visibility Enforcement, is an approach designed to create deterrence and change unlawful traffic behaviors. It combines highly visible proactive law enforcement targeting a specific traffic safety issue. These IDEP hours must be used to conduct traffic enforcement activities in the areas to impact impaired driving and fatal crashes. The eligibility for, maximum for this grant is $31,549.85. Again, that's reimbursement to the city for officer overtime and fringe benefits. Also included is reimbursement for transportation and fuel costs up to 5% for the total labor costs. This grant runs in the same time period as the STEP Grant, which runs from October 1st of '21 through September 30th of '22. Staff recommends council approval for the acceptance of this grant.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
Mayor, move to approve Resolution 21-37.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 21-37. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next is Resolution 21-38.
Resolution 21-38, a resolution authorizing the submission of applications for federal FAST Act funds through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Each year, MVRPC puts forth the FAST Act, which is the Surface Transportation Program and Transportation Alternatives Program for eligible roadways within the planning, or within the region. This year, or for grants, this year, we have the opportunity to try to get six grants with this. With, this year, they also had funding available for resurfacing only projects. The resurfacing only projects had STP funding, as well as some of the CERSA, which is the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act funding, that we could apply for with this, as part of all of these grants. So, I'll just run through these real quick with the ones that we are recommending to go forward with this year. The first one is Indian Ripple Road from Barronwood to East Woodview. That would be a widening of the roadway to three lanes, and a eight-foot side path down the south side to continue that side path that stops at Barronwood right now. With that, that one, the grant requested for that is $1,284,000, with a total estimated cost of $2,465,000. The second project is the Kemp Road Widening Project. That widening is from Fairfield Road, North Fairfield Road to Haynes Road. This is one that we've put forth in the past that we've been unsuccessful with, but we feel now's a good time to try to do this again. This widening would be for three lanes east of Speedway, basically where it goes down to two lanes right now, and it'll also add curb gutter, storm sewer, sidewalk, and a side path in between those two sections of roadway. Number three, right there, is North Fairfield Widening from Fairwood Drive to, or, yeah, Fairwood Drive to Kemp Road. That widening would be to install the two-way, or to install a two-way left turn lane down the middle, and then with that, it would push it out, so we'd have to redo sidewalks and curb as well again. Those would be five-foot sidewalks. For that one, we're looking at grant requests of $711,550, a total of $1,276,500. The fourth project is Shaker Town Road Side Path. This would connect Willow Run across 675 down to Ankeny Middle School, where we have current sidewalk that goes to Shaker Town, so that would be that connection all the way down to Shaker Town then. That would be an eight-foot side path along the south side of the roadway with curb gutter and some storm sewer improvements with that. That is a TA project that we would be going for with that as well. The grant that we are requesting is $346,500, with a total cost of eight hun, or $5,850,000. The next one that we have is the Grange Hall Resurfacing. This is the project that we are putting forth to try to use that CERSA money. That's a resurfacing, it's a mill and fill resurfacing project from Shaker Town to Indian Ripple. Our estimated cost for that is $460,000, or, $460,240,000, with a grant request of $391,716. The last project that we are going to try for, grant for, is the resurfacing of Colonel Glen Highway from the West Corp line to Grange Hall Road. This, although this is not the most deteriorated at this point, we have a project for North Fairfield next year already on the books, so we feel this one, with the amount of traffic that it's get, that it gets, it will deteriorate, deteriorate quickly as the pavement gets older. Thus, that's why we feel this is a good time to go for this resurfacing now. For this one, the grant request is $591,840, with a total cost of $764,800. With the two resurfacing projects also, MVRPC and ODOT have a complete streets policy. With the resurfacing, it's a simple resurfacing that requires an exemption from that complete streets policy, so that is also part of the resolution for this, these grants, so. Everything else meets that complete streets policy, so.
Is that complete street policy, things like curbs?
It is, yes, Mayor. It's, yes, the complete street is basically a complete street for all users. So, it's vehicles, as well as pedestrians, bicyclists, transit users, everything that's like that.
Does it need to be an arterial road, or a certain classification, it seems?
Yes, it does. It has to be an arterial, or collector, or, there's some township routes that also fall into that collector category as well.
Thank you. Nick, could you explain to me, please, how you came up with the project ranking for each?
Sure. What we did, Councilmember Bales, is we had, MVRPC puts forth a project scoring evaluation sheet, or it's a, it's a, it's a few forms that they have together, where it scores each project based on ranking with roadways, accidents, level of service is another thing, there's some other criteria in there as well. With these, we scored these, we had eight or nine projects that we looked at preliminarily to score, and of those, these came out as the best scoring projects for all of them that we had looked at this year, so.
And are they in, are they in order based on the highest?
They are, that is correct.
And affecting safety and everything else?
Yes.
Was that was the criteria?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
I'm, I'm involved in that process with the engineers and the director of the department as well, and one thing to be clear, and I talked to Vice Mayor Adams earlier today, these don't mean that these are our top six priorities. This is the top six priorities that we can get grant money with. And they're, that's two different things, because I had priorities, we really need to do this, we really need to, they won't score, they'll never see the light of day. So, that is the difference in when, I think it's been mentioned today, when you live by grants, this is what we have to do, because we have no funding to do other things that we feel are important, because you're paying 100% of that project, versus getting millions of dollars and may have to only match 25% or 50% or something. So, these are our rankings of what we feel is the best, best possibility to get funding, and they are important, but it may not necessarily be, man, I wish we could get this as far as our top priority, this, some of our top priorities that we think are important have zero chance of getting grants. And at some point in time, I mean, some of the projects, we could do all the grant funding, all our cash matches, and all our resurfacing for a year or two years, would all have to go to that project without, you know, other additional, you know, say, grant funding. And some of those projects just aren't funded, and it doesn't look like they're going to be funded, funded anytime soon. What's unique about this opportunity here is, as he, Nick said, normally, resurfacing is not grant funded. So, it's big that we're able to maybe have an opportunity to get some resurfacing, purely resurfacing funded through a grant. So, that, that's a big thing, because normally, that's a big not a chance. So, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Pete, I appreciate you and Nick explaining that, because, you know, as you look through all of these, and it looks like, you know, for example, the Shaker Town Road, to get it down to Ankeny with the sidewalk and everything was, is a real safety issue, and, and just from a layman's perspective, why isn't that higher on the list? But when you talk about how they get points, and the probability of getting funded and everything else, it makes more sense then, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one quick question. This is kind of a personal thing, because I live right off Barronwood. I turn on that every day. Is it possible to, because you're gonna start widening it there?
To put a gate.
That's been considered, sorry. You're starting to widen it, there's, the traffic down there goes by pretty quick now. Officer Barber spends a lot of time writing tickets down there. And for those of us that turn into that, onto Barronwood, is it possible to start with, like, have a right turn lane there? Is that anything?
That's something, that's something Vice Mayor Adams that we'll look at with it. I forgot to mention with this one, too, there is a site distance issue out at Trinity that Jeff had noticed that we will be looking at also, so.
Look at it and consider it.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, again, thanks for all your hard work, and, so do I hear a motion?
Move that Resolution 21-38, Your Honor, be approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 21-38. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. And without any due delay, we're gonna move on to Resolution 21-39.
Resolution 21-39, resolution adopting pay schedule for non-union, part-time, seasonal, and intermittent employees.
Thank you. Mr. Gussar.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. This is a, as you're aware, our permanent part-time employee, our Cable Communication Coordinator, has resigned. The unique thing about that position was that it was a union position. About six or eight years ago, we took part-timers out of the CWA Union, but he was actually grandfathered into the contract, and the contract clearly states that he was the last one. There was actually three that got grandfathered in, and as they left or went on to another location, those people got out of the contract and then became a part-time employee on the general side. So, what we realized with his position was that he was a 307, it was a pretty high position hourly rated because of his technical expertise. When we evaluated the position, ran through the current market for that position, we decided to change the job description. It used to be Cable Communication Coordinator, which really just was down to just cable TV, but we realized that it was more of a broader scope, so we made a new job description called Communication Specialist. And because the, the pay codes in the general part-time side didn't go up to where his range needed to be to bring somebody else in with that expertise, we had to add a pay grade into our existing pay grade schedule. And that's what you're seeing before you, is that we're adding the 907 pay grade between $25 and $35 for an hour, for that technical expertise to get the job done, so. You recall that normally, we do this every year, we bring the pay grades before you, but this one required a special attention because of the events, so. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions?
Move to approve Resolution 21-39, Your Honor?
Second.
I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-39. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is liquor permits. I think you're back on, Jev.
Good evening, again. This is a new liquor permit for Bob Evans Restaurants located on CJ Drive, 3409 CJ. The Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control sent notification of a request regarding a new, a new D2 liquor permit for the Bob Evans Restaurant. regarding a new, a new D2 liquor permit for the Bob Evans Restaurant. And the applicant's business entity does not require any type of a ownership disclosure form that they had to provide to the state, so thereby there was nobody to do a background check on at this time, and staff is recommending this application request move forward without comment.
Thank you.
Motion to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, next is a decision item. Mr. Burkett.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is actually a, the Green County Turk Board, Tax Incentive Review Committee, met for a second time this year. Typically, in years past, we've only met once in April, but the Green County Recorder's Office wanted to have that meeting later in the year as, in the future. And so in order to, you know, move the schedule a little bit, he had a, a second meeting for this year. It was reviewing the same information that council has already reproved back in April. And basically, it was an overview of the Greens' TIF project and, and the balances in the fact that they collected three hundred and thirty thousand dollars this year in tax revenue, made a five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar debt service payment, and there was a hundred and two thousand dollar left over from the revenues between what they collected in property tax and, and the county contributed towards the payment. And that excess revenue goes into an excess revenue fund, and the current balance of that fund as of December of 2020 was nine hundred and, about nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The Turk Board reviewed these numbers and, again, recommended approval and recommend that City Council continue the TIF for the next year. Staff is also recommending approval, and there is a motion for that consideration in your packet this evening.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, I move to accept the committee recommendation for the Green TIF.
I have a motion and a second to accept the committee recommendations for the TIF at the Green. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to council time. How about we start with Councilmember Schwartz for a change?
Thank you, Mayor. This has been a busy, a busy past few weeks, and I think the upcoming few weeks are going to be equally as busy. I had the pleasure of attending the Kiwanis Open House a few weeks ago. It was a great success. I was very pleased to announce finally our donation to the Beaver Creek ROTC. We were able to donate them six thousand dollars as a result of our Kiwanis Golf Outing, so that was very exciting. In addition to that, we were also able to get two hundred and fifty, I believe, maybe two hundred and sixty helmets. Thank you for that, Pete. Two hundred and sixty helmets for the Safety Town with Beaver Creek Police, so excited for that as well. In addition to that, I was able to volunteer with the Owens Place 5K yesterday. That was a great event, had a great turnout. I was manning the water station, so the runners were coming up a steep hill at the time they peaked, and so I'm like, you may need to take a breath so you can have a little bit of water. So it was, it was a great event, great turnout. And then unfortunately, I was unable to attend the Chamber Golf Outing, but I've heard nothing but resounding praises, and it was a great success, so I was glad to hear that. Upcoming, within the next few weeks, since I won't be seeing everyone, on October 6th, from 9:00 to 11:30, the Beaver Creek Women's League will be doing their Candidates and Issues, so I encourage you all to come out and listen to myself as well as some of our fellow council members and other political candidates and issues that will be on the ballot. On October 9th, we will be doing the Boo and Brew at the Mall Fairfield Commons, and all of the donations for that will be to go to Kiwanis at Beaver Creek, so we are able to, again, hopefully make donations and help support the youth in our community, very similar to the Red White and Brew, except it is not during the fireworks, and it'll be from 2:00 to 6:00, so a little afternoon event. And that is all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Kern.
You know, two items, Your Honor. One, I was privileged to hear the manager made a nice presentation to the Rotary. Vice Mayor Adams announced him, and I think he gave a really clear and concise explanation of the challenges that we have under the American Rescue Plan and what we plan to do with it. Then secondly, we participated yesterday in the run, or well, kind of, was in the run at Owens Place, and it was really fun to be a part of it.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. How about Councilmember Bales?
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, want to thank the city manager for the last minute fill-in at the Rotary Club to talk about the ARPA funding that the city is going to get. I appreciate that very much. The only other thing I wanted to say was just a committee update. Met with the Golf Advisory Board last week, and they were happy to report, I'm sure Mr. Casera is happy to hear, that so far year-to-date compared to 2020, they are up like twenty-nine-hundred rounds of golf. Green fee revenues up over seventy-seven thousand compared to this year, this time last year. Cart fees are up eleven and a half thousand. They're averaging a hundred and seventy-five rounds of golf a day during the week and two hundred and twenty rounds of golf on the weekends per day. So they're really cranking out there. They're very happy with the improvements we've made at the driving range, with the artificial mats and the nets that have been put up. They, they've saved a lot of range balls from getting lost in the tall grass, so just happy that I was able to attend that meeting and give you a report. That's all I've got to say.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dur.
Thank you, Mayor. Alongside Chief Feer Reader and many others in the Beaver Creek, Beaver Creek community, I was able to represent council at Pastor Delphine Gordon's event at Beaver Creek Seventh Day Adventist Church. It was a wonderful opportunity, wonderful sermon from the pastor. He gave each of us 90 seconds to speak, and for those of you that know me, that's a challenge to keep it in there, but really great opportunity to, to meet the people that attend, very welcoming event, and so really thank all of them, Beaver Creek Seventh Day Adventist Church, for, for having me. I'd also like to echo Councilmember Schwartz's comments on the forthcoming Beaver Creek Women's League event, starting at 9:00 AM at the Fire Department down the road, number 61. Number of important ballot issues as well as elections in the area, so I'd encourage everyone to attend. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Vice Mayor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, attended the Kiwanis Open House. It was a good event. The mayor did a great job explaining a lot of things. Councilmember Schwartz and I really didn't help him much on that, even though he asked for it, but he did a great job. I did attend the Chamber Golf Outing. It was a beautiful day on the course. My game wasn't, but that's okay. They did a good job. They raised a lot of money for the, the chamber, so. I was also able to attend the Owens Place 5K, 10K fundraiser yesterday, oh, Saturday, I guess it was, Sunday, no, it was yesterday. They had an outstanding weather for that as well, and they had over ninety runners and walkers participate. Several local organizations of business participated and sponsored the activity, including Beaver Creek Kiwanis, Beaver Creek Lions Club, Green Bucks, Ritters, Frozen Custard, the Pizza Dive, and Zoe's Special Lemonade Stand. And I want everybody to know that Zoe donated all of her earnings to Owens Place from that activity, so that's, she's a fine young lady. I attended the Beaver Creek Youth Council Open House yesterday, and there were a lot of new kids that came out to sign up for that. I highly recommend the young people of Beaver Creek getting involved in that. It's a good way for them to get their community service hours that they're needed for graduation anymore, and so they, they do a lot of good things for the community. They really work hard on promoting and helping our community members, especially the older people. They'll do the rake and run, where they'll rake the yards, and they do a lot of really, really great activities, so. Also, I've been asked to do something tonight that I'm really excited about. We always talk about our staff and how great a job they do. Well, I think it's time we recognize a few of them for the number of years that they've spent with the city, and I'd like to read some of these off, and they're up here on the thing. It's Jackie Dell with Parks, she's got twenty-two years. Bill Casera, fourteen years. Carla Countryman with the Police Department, she's a dispatcher, three years. Nick Smith, Engineering, eleven years. Ryan McLeaheny, McLeaheny, Engineering, one year. Yolanda Weber with the Police, she has ten years. Todd Suki with the Police has twenty-two years. Judy Limkey is from the Senior Center, has eight years. Mr. Burkett, Planning and Development, has fifteen years. James Spicer with the Police Department, thirty-two years. It's hard to believe he's still out there doing his job, but he does a good job. Dylan Saint Jean, Police, one year. Chris Williams, he's SRO now, of course, everybody knows Chris, he's thirty years. David Ashworth, another young police officer, doing a great job, two years. Paige Bagford, Public Service, thirteen years. Nate Sparks, Public Service, nine years. Libby Chapman with the Police, twenty-three years. And Chrissy Fedkow, Senior Center, sixteen years. I want to congratulate them and thank them for all their years of service to the city of Beaver Creek.
Very much, very much so, and that, and I think we're going to make a habit of recognizing our anniversary staff on a regular basis, and so congratulations to all those who are celebrating an anniversary. Mayor's time, I will say that my wife attended and participated in the 5K at Owens Place in my lieu, and she said it was a great event, and so she was always happy to participate. I've had a request from County Commissioner Rick Peralas to make sure people know the, there's an issue on the ballot coming up in November for the, a new county jail. And so there's some literature back in the back. If anybody here would like to pick some up when they leave, they're more than welcome. The commissioner will be here on October 11th as a pre-scheduled speaker to present the details. I guess got back from Washington DC where I was part of the DDC fly-in, and it was very interesting. The weather did not cooperate much, but everything else was very, very interesting. A lot of talk about the pending infrastructure bill, the, what they call the clear infrastructure, and then the follow-up that has a more of the personal infrastructure or humane and humanity infrastructure, however you want to say it. But it did pass, the first one passed the Senate bipartisan, and it has not had a vote that I'm aware of in the House. They originally said it was going to be today, and then I've heard, I saw somewhere, I thought they moved it to Thursday. But we have to hope that that one moves forward because that deals strictly with infrastructure, the common infrastructure that you and I and everybody else thinks about when we say The other thing I wanted to just bring up, and that is, as we all know, that our ARPA funds were cut in half because of various situations, and we're a small group, we're a relatively small group in the state of non-entitlement cities. So all the monies that were cut, were cut from non-entitlement cities. So I, along with the OMA, and we each individually need to stay on top with our representatives, that as communities return some of that money that they can't use, that we get first shot to be made whole, the entitlement cities, because it only makes sense. Now, the governor's not going to do it, it's something that the, our state representatives are going to be doing, will have to say, and so we need to make it clear to them that we feel that we deserve to be made whole. It was, you know, we went from ten to five, and I'm not looking for a penny more necessarily, but I think we deserve to be made whole. So it's up and coming on us to get that message to our state representatives and others that we know. So I would hope that we would all participate in that and make it known. I've made it known, and I've signed a letter with the OMA heading on it that let the speaker know, and we'll see where that goes. All right, and that's all I have for tonight. There's a lot of things going on, and it's just one of those things that I'll probably catch up next time, I know some of the things have been going on. But I'll turn this over to the city manager for his report.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just a brief couple of updates. Project update, Research Boulevard, you know, everybody knows that is State Route 835, that sanitary sewer line under the roadway, you know, near the new GE site, you know, that is still going on. The closure along, started September 22nd, supposed to be completed today, so do we know, is that completed or close to it? Yeah, sure, please. Thank you, Mr. Mormon. We have a great staff. It's our city engineer, Jeff Mormon.
Yes, unfortunately, they had some issues with some of the soils out there, some utility conflicts, so it's looking like Wednesday to reopen the road.
All right, that's good information, thank you. And that's, that's what's on the report here, but it's great to have the city engineer to, to, to come up and let us know. You know, when things happen like that, a lot of people don't realize that, you know, we don't have our own staff for many of these projects. These are contracted out from telephone poles or light poles to, you know, installing a sanitary or sewer pipeline. That's not our staff. We don't have that type of equipment. So pavement milling, milling after we get done with that will be work along with Research Boulevard, it's scheduled to begin in early October. So we get that done, then from basically when you get off of 35 onto 835, that exit ramp, from there all the way to County Line Road will be repaved for 835, so that will be nice. Indian Ripple Roads Sidewalks Project, contractors placing curbing along the south side of the roadway this early this week. They will begin placing new sidewalks late in the weekend into early next week. Some travel delays can be expected. It's a lot of orange barrels through there. Zinc Road Extension, this is great. Work started today, September 27th. This project's expected to have a minimal impact on traffic, but Zinc Road Extension, that's off of Colonel Glen across, over on the other side of 675 there. And just a couple of things, Senior Center update, the evening this weekend hours have returned, so terrific. I tell you, the seniors love this, Monday through Thursday, 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Friday, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and Saturday, 9:00 AM to noon. Our senior center is hopping. It, it's hopping. Now, especially Councilmember Kern, he's happy the exercise room is back open and the new flooring is done, so that's great. We had some issues with some water, and so we got some permanent fix this time, so I don't know if, I don't know anybody that's happy to exercise, but anyway, there's a lot of happy people with that. Charles. And hey, a great event that even last year during COVID, when you couldn't even get out of your car. Last year, we had to try a truck, which what, you really wasn't trying, it was almost see a truck last year, but it was like well-attended last year. Kids were stayed in the car, and they got to drive through like a drive-through to see all the vehicles, and they loved it last year, but guess what? It's back. They'll be actually trying a truck. So that's the Saturday, October 2nd, so 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It is at our municipal maintenance facility, 789 Orchard Lane. So this is hopefully good weather. There's other contractors that will come out, so the, not only just the police and our big dump trucks and, and snow plows, but the, and, and backhoes, but we always have other contractors that come out. Fire Department will be there, Police Department will be there, so the kids absolutely love this, so don't miss that, October 2nd, Saturday, starting at 10:00 AM. And that's all I have.
Very good. And the try truck is just a fabulous thing. I mean, it's a family event that everybody can enjoy in all ages. All right, next on the agenda is citizen comment. If there's anyone here present tonight that would like to address council on any issue at all, they're welcome to at this time. We ask that you limit your conversation to three minutes or get time donated by somebody else in the audience up to nine minutes. So if there's somebody ready, please come forward and give us a name and address.
Good evening, council members. My name is Brian Pollock. I live at 3781 Finn Castle Drive. For those of you who don't know where that is, that is the first street north of Kemp in the Spicer Heights subdivision. If you're familiar with that area, you know the, the Kemp Road Widening Project has been ongoing there and was finished earlier this summer. When we moved into that house in 2014, and one of the first things that I We moved into that house in 2014, and one of the first things that I heard when I moved in was about the Kemp Road Widening Project, and 17 years later, now it's finished. And we appreciate that. But I operated as the neighborhood project manager and liaison with the engineering department during the project, as Mr. Mormon can attest to. As part of that project, we were compensated for the loss of three trees in our yard and for an easement for a storm sewer that has now been placed there so that we can move the water that has gathered in Spicer Heights across Kemp and down eventually into Beaver Creek. My neighbors and I that live on Finn Castle, whose backyard's back up to Kemp, were the unofficial retaining pond for Spicer Heights for many, many years, and we appreciate the fact that that project is done. As part of the project, there were also six trees that were removed from, between our fence and Kemp Road that provided a sight screen and sound screen for our house, and there were many other trees along that two-block portion that provided the same to my neighbors. As part of that project, and one of the reasons why it took 17 years to be completed was the fact that the project requirements changed, and it required having the bicycle path put in on the north side of Kemp and the sidewalk on the south side. I see some nodding heads, so I'm glad to know that you're familiar with that. As, as part of the project, our six-foot-high privacy fence was taken down, and then while the work was going on, we had, we had the heavy equipment and things in our backyard. We had a temporary fence put up. And then the project paid for new six-foot-high privacy fence to be put back up, which was well expected, and we appreciated it very much. However, when the bicycle path was constructed in the area where the trees were previously, which at that point was a small gully that helped run the water down to the old storm sewer, the storm sewer, the height of the bicycle path was raised to the point now that when someone walks or bikes on the bicycle path, our six-foot-high privacy fences no longer provide privacy in any manner imaginable. My wife, Joni, is with me. She is five foot four, and she can stand on the bicycle path and see into the living rooms and kitchens of all 12 houses that back up from on Finn Castle on the bike path just by walking along it. That bicycle path gets far more foot traffic than it does bicycles, and we have people who are looking into our yards and into the back of our houses all the time now. We understand this wasn't the intent of this part of the project, but I have had the city engineer, Mr. Mormon, out. He has stood on the bicycle path with me and acknowledged that he could see into our backyard and into our house. There, he made a suggestion that, he said that he would support us with asking for a exemption from the six-foot-high limit on the privacy fence there, and maybe that would be an okay solution if it was just my problem. But this is not just my problem. This is the problem for the, all of us who have our backyards that back up to Kemp here. So I would like to request that the City Council appoint someone to come out and take a look at this, assess the situation, verify the things that I'm saying, and see what we can do to come to an equitable solution for this. The project's great. My yard, backyard is no longer a swamp, and I appreciate that. But the fact that we've lost, one of the reasons why we purchased this house 17 years ago is something that I would like to have dealt with.
All right. Sounds like a legitimate concern to me. And we don't get into, at this particular stage of the agenda, we don't get into back and forth necessarily. Your comments are on the record, and we will certainly be sure that staff follows up in an appropriate manner.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we will close the public input portion. And next on the agenda is an executive session.
Mayor, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Hyle Revised Code for the purpose of consideration of the purchase of property for public purposes. There will be no decision coming from this executive session.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilmember Bales. Excuse me, Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Dur.
Yes.
Mayor Stein.
Yes. And again, for the record, there will be no decision coming from this, so the visuals will be discontinued, but we will be back. If somebody wants us to wait around, we will be back in chambers to reopen the regular meeting and adjourn. So thank you very much. We are in executive session.